Sure. So if you want to write them.
Is he coming today?
He's right there.
Alright, let's call this, uh. Call this dog and pony show order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To your republic which stands one nation under God indivisible and every being its problem.
Thank you. Alrighty, attendance please, Mr. Angel.
Here.
Ms. Arp?
Here.
Mr. Byer?
Laura, here.
Attaboy, um, Ms. Zensley.
Here.
Ms. Conley is excused, Ms. Howland, anybody heard from Sally? Anybody text her quick? Ms. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Wilk said he's running late, he is on the way. Mr. Wrangler's here. Alright, public comments, those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items be allowed a maximum of four minutes to address their concerns, this is the only time during the meeting that citizens are allowed to address the DDA, please state your name and address for the record if you would like.
I could hear you though.
We were hoping you'd bust out in song.
You really don't want that.
Yes we.
No, trust me, you really don't.
Well, it'll be recorded, so.
Right, so, um. We designed a facade improvement program, uh. What, twenty years ago?
She was on the DDA for, if you don't know that.
So, just to streamline your efforts, you know, I was just here to recommend that perhaps you just dust that off, pull it out, look at it, and you might have to modify it a little bit, but, um, that might save you a lot of time in your workshop today. So, just a suggestion.
Alright, anybody else, otherwise, conflicts of interest and any ex parte communication? Beware of? We, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is, and I don't believe there is a consent agenda for this one, as a special, uh, meeting, alright, we're gonna move on to the unfinished business, uh, to discuss the facade improvement program, and the old plan is included in these that we're discussing today, so. Um, I actually wanted to start this out though, in, before we dive into these real quick, just by brainstorming, which we can use the, use the sheets up there for. Whether, uh, and just brainstorm among, uh, among the DDA itself, our members, as to our overall goals as we're putting this together. If we can put a phrase or two on that, does anybody have any, any terms we might want to throw out there, in terms of, uh, goals for what we're actually trying to accomplish with it? I'll throw out a couple.
Since I was late, I'm not entirely sure what you're talking about, sorry.
Goals for doing this, so, beautifying downtown.
Understood.
Overall goals. Updates.
Modernizing.
Yeah, I'll come up with one, make it easy. Not that it isn't, but the easier you make it, the easier it is.
I had that listed under my priorities, but that's good. Encourage upkeep. And I would also say encouraging new business by, obviously mitigating some of the costs that may be. Nope.
I've got something. It's always been my sore spot is the, the gardens downtown, cement gardens. And you've done a wonderful job on them, and just beautiful. And I did talk to garden club, and, um, we said, they're gonna tear up the streets this year at some point, so maybe we just let them kind of rest.
Not put anything in them?
Right, because they're, it's not a big problem, because they still look pretty darn nice, you know? So, that's what garden club decided. You know, where there's five hundred dollars in there, I don't know.
This is, this is talking about the goals for what we're doing today.
It's the goal, to do something about them.
Probably under beautify, anything else in overall goals? I think it's handy maybe to keep those up there as we're going through the discussion. I also added, I also had a list of, of, of priorities, and obviously I had one of those, easy to administer. In keeping this as simple as possible, so that we're not spending a lot of, or the DDA director is not spending a lot of busy time necessarily administering this.
That's really correct.
Anything else that we would have is?
I would say business friendly.
Business friendly?
That goes along with that, not making it so hard that people just say like, whatever, I'm not even gonna do.
Right. Anything else for? Priorities?
Uh, winter snow, I guess, we've talked about that, should always be a priority for us, for our businesses downtown.
The what?
The snowbanks in the winter, so, that we've always prioritized.
That wouldn't be under facade improvement.
Yeah, we're talking about the facade.
Well.
This is for the, this is for what we're talking about today, for facade improvement, so, okay. Alright, concerns? I just wanna cut that one in half maybe. Anything that we want to avoid? And I was going to raise the question of chains. If Jose decides to hang it up and Taco Bell wants to come in, for example. Uh, or, a, um. What's the famous coffee shop?
Big, or Starbucks.
Starbucks. Is that a concern? I'm, I'm asking a question.
Oh, you mean, do we not allow chains to do this?
Yeah, we're talking about facade improvement, that's what this topic is today, so we're just talking about that.
I would say we keep it just to locally held businesses.
We have to define that then.
Understood, yeah. As in, like, if your main base of your business is within Cedar Springs, then you should be eligible.
Are we saying downtown though?
This would be in the DDA, facade improvement is in the DDA corridor, so, well, I'm, I'm asking if the board has a concern, if we had a national chain, or, I, the corollary on that is multiple property owner too.
I think it takes away from.
You'd see addressed, you see addressed in some of the other examples that we had.
I think it takes away from the community when these big chains would get this improvement plan, when they already clearly have the resources to provide upgrades to their facilities, and it's their goal to make their, you know, their building stand out already. So I think they should be excluded from, and then put more resources to the community-led storefronts.
Yeah, I also think it should be one. One person, like, you should only be able to get it once, you should be able to get it from multiple buildings.
That's why I'm bringing. I agree with that.
This is why I'm bringing the questions up before we get into examining different ones, so, multiple properties, and we do see this addressed, if hopefully you guys read through the other examples, a couple of them did address multiple properties, they either put a time limit on it, or a flat limit on it, so.
You know, just to clarify what you just said, Laura. Even if you have multiple properties, you can still use it on a property in the DDA purview, but not on like seven properties, then you, okay, I, I, just clarifying.
We would have to, obviously have, if we're gonna entertain that, and that's, I just want to have these up there to kind of guide our conversation, but if we're gonna have that up there, we are gonna have to come up with a definition of what a chain and/or a local business is, which is going to be contradictory to the business friendly and the easier, easy to administer, so. I just want to make sure that we're laying these out here, and thinking about what our goals are upfront before we get into these.
This is a new program, um, on a couple of the programs that were in there, uh, it says that projects that are already in the works, there are a few buildings like Rob Baker Insurance right now that is currently doing this, they would be excluded, but this is something that, you know, regardless if we're updating, we should make it available to everybody, because it's in our best interest to open this up and make it work for our community.
You're saying include those that have already started, or you're saying?
Yeah, cause like Sparta, when I was looking at the pamphlet, they disclude any work that's already been in progress, but since this is a new program, I, I, I think that we should retroactive, allow it to everybody right now, just because it's gonna improve the whole downtown. And, you know, that's where really, what we're really looking for at the end of the day.
Sorry. I don't think we should do that.
My concern would be if it's already done, it's already.
No, no, I meant like in progress.
I know, but if it is already in progress.
Or ninety percent done.
How do you?
Gotcha.
The, the, while I don't disagree with your premise, it's easier to, going back to the easy, it's easier to draw the line at, I'm starting from scratch, than I'm twenty percent done, I'm thirty percent done, I'm ninety-nine percent done. That, that line is, we're starting at zero, is an easy, easily definable, easy to see line. And everyone's, it's on the same level.
Okay. I think just reading between the lines on some of that Sparta one in particular, I think part of that was to encourage them to maybe do a little more than they otherwise would have done if they're planning. But, I, I, I get your premise too, of not necessarily.
There's a couple rundown buildings that would be nice just to see a little.
Well, and that's one of, that's obviously one of the things that we're trying to do here, is to beautify.
That's why I wanted to bring it up.
Modernize some of those buildings that are.
Make it only available to building owners?
Well, that is, if you want to add that on there, building owners or tenants?
Is that the question?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know how we could do it for tenants, right, so the building owner would be the one that would have to put it.
Again, if you look into some of these, there were, um, if you had a lease seller, that they would be, that they were, could apply for it, they had to have approval of the owner. But, those are, I mean, again, we can do what we want, but it is, it is good to note up here whether we want to include both, and there's language in here for some of the other ones, and there's three that we can review.
I can spell that a little bit, going back. When Melanie had the building, and she had her hair, like downtown, and her dad owned that building. She took advantage of the facade program, and all she did is go by the paint. Yeah, she went out there, got a letter, and painted it herself, that's all there was to. So, in that case, she didn't own that building, she just painted it in front of. And it was not a big deal, it went smooth, everything was fine, and, and, uh, so, that's all I can say, is.
I feel like there has to be tenants involved, yes, because I myself, for my business, I don't own my building, so if I wanted to improve my facade, I would have to have the owner's permission to do it. Yeah, for sure. But I think it should involve tenants that are renting.
What did you say, a white box situation, you're gonna be improving the building as a tenant?
Yes, absolutely.
That may not be as much of a concern.
There shouldn't be any negative feedback on that, I wouldn't think at all.
I, I've heard a complaint about, uh, the trees blocking the views of the businesses, and that would be a concern for, if you're gonna have awnings or whatever, but you know, your facade and those trees might not mix, they're getting pretty big. Yeah.
Are you saying we should allow removal of a tree to be covered by this grant, or, because the trees are the city's responsibility, if I remember that correctly, yes? And, correct me if I'm wrong, so, I don't think we would be able to do that.
Well, you know, if somebody was gonna have a awning or something, they might, that would might rule it out if they cut the tree.
Right, I understand that, but I don't think we can, I don't think we can cut the trees.
Well, with permission, you know, it's just something I've heard some issues on that people can't actually see their, their businesses there, or their sign, or their facade.
A little second pass on that one. We have that one tree and it blocks everything on our front, you can't see our signage, so, yeah, I don't think it's for this meeting, but yeah.
Let them grow up. The guys, somebody was out trimming them all last week. Did them wonder.
Did them all do, yeah, it was a really great job.
Pull out of there, hide forward, no, you traffic, it's gonna go like this. And I, the reason why those, just got the trunks, well, then you just gotta trunk them away.
Yeah.
A few years, so what? I don't think you take those trees out, to beautify, there's no, no, you can design around those trees, is my point.
Okay, it's the awning I was thinking about, it might be too close to a tree.
Anything else that we want to add on here in terms of list of goals? Priorities for the plan?
I would say.
Concerns.
I, and I don't know if I'm getting ahead of myself, but, I'm looking at it here, I don't think it's something to start again. If it was a thousand dollars, under a thousand dollars, you had to get some kind of permission that you couldn't afford to do it yourself. And that was highlighted in the.
One of them, there was one that was for.
I think that wasn't ours.
A design assistance that was in the Cedar Springs one.
As architecture and engineering.
And, and, and it says, where, I gotta find.
It's on page five.
Looking at it right now.
Anyway, see where it's highlighted?
Yeah.
And it, does that mean, I guess it means that if you can't afford it, you gotta get permission, what, what are you, what's that say?
Well, that's in, that's in that individual plan, that, that is, that was for the previous Cedar Springs guideline that had a, a no match for the drawings or renderings.
I don't like it.
Well, when we get into it, we'll.
Okay, that's what, okay, that's, you don't want that, now you want it in.
Like, the only other thing I would throw on there as, uh, as just something to keep in mind, that we're talking about public dollars here, obviously, these, these dollars are, are, is to, are TIF financing, so. Just responsible use of.
I agree with you, that dollar's going back to the front of that building, that's where that dollar's gonna end up sticking, if we sunroom.
Like, one thing that sticks out from, if you look at Sparta's, they talk about specifically, you cannot use it to pay for your permits, you have to pay for your permits yourself. And I, I mean, I agree with that, because you're literally moving public money from one bucket to another, in the same house, that's silly. So I don't disagree with that at all, but I just, something that stuck out when I was reading through this this morning.
Okay, anything else that we want to put on that, just kind of keep in mind as we're going through this? Alright, then, uh, we have three different plans to look through, that everybody have a chance hopefully to at least peek through these quickly. The old one from Cedar is obviously the large, the most pages. We have one from Sparta. We have one from Howard City, and then Darla was kind, kind enough to put, excuse me, Ms. Falcon was kind enough to put a, uh, a little summary of the three together for us. Was there one of the, was there any one of these that anybody particularly liked to start with? Was there one that you particularly liked to start with? I think you probably went through them most thoroughly.
Easiest.
As the acting DDA director.
For our cities, um, only from the standpoint of the percentage, it was a fifty percent. Whereas the city one, it's fifty percent for this category, twenty-five percent this category, thirty percent this category.
Agreed.
We want to, we want to, um. We want to start philosophically as a board, what do we like as a percentage, do we like fifty percent, do we like thirty percent, do we like ten percent, do we like eighty percent?
Is it like fifty percent up to a certain amount?
Does that mean we would change that value as well, or just?
Well, in Howard Cities, if we look at that, that is fifty percent and no max.
I say fifty percent plus, a sixty, fifty-five.
Disagreeing, I'm just saying that's what they're doing.
They must have more money than us.
It's, it's, it's easier to sell, I'm a salesman.
In the, in the, no.
Really?
But it's easier to sell.
Cedar Springs was a fifty percent match, up to ten thousand.
Yeah, I think, I like that.
Well, I'm asking, I guess, as a, as a starting point, what do we like as a percentage, do we like fifty percent, or do we like another percentage for a different reason?
I like sixty.
I think fifty is good, because they have skin in them. I like that too.
Fifty percent at ten thousand is a lot of money, so that would be, you really gotta deposit on what's gonna happen.
It is for, it is for us too. I might not, I might not just even in the other direction, we might be able to feed more mouths if we did a twenty-five or a thirty percent. They're putting significant, we're not supposed to be, in, in my view, we're not supposed to be paying for this with public dollars, but assisting. Throwing that out there for discussion, if you guys all like fifty, that's cool with me too.
I have a question. How many people took advantage of the one in Howard City, do you know?
Um, it's pretty popular, actually, um, their DDA is much more funded than, than Cedar Springs, um, but.
I would say both, personally, both Cedar, both Howard City and Sparta have made significant strides downtown with their facades over the past ten or twenty years.
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
I would say at least four a year in Howard City.
Do you think, has, has there been like a certain number that it stays at, like what they're asking for? No, it's not all over the board?
How much do we currently have for this program, like? Fifteen, so if one project costs ten thousand, we're going at fifty, that's five thousand, that's three people that we could help, if we went in at fifty percent right now.
That's, that's just for the, on the current, on the old program that was just for the transport.
Right, yeah. But I'm kind of with you, kind of with you, is if we did it lower, we can fix more, as opposed to, I mean, it's, it's in best, everyone's best interest to update, but are we responsible for fifty percent of upgrading them?
Obviously, the higher per, the percentage, the greater the participation, which you've seen in, you've seen in, um, in Howard City. So, I mean, obviously, and none of us know necessarily what's going to happen, but we're trying to make best judgments, and that's hence I'm posing that, that as our initial question. You know, philosophically, what do we like?
On your mind, so, is the maximum ten thousand, so the project could be twenty thousand? It's fifty percent, it's ten thousand, DDA dollars maximum, but the project could be twenty thousand?
Bernie, do you remember how that was done, was it fifty percent ten, or was it fifty percent up to?
I wouldn't remember that, I think it was.
Okay. It would have been fifty percent of a ten thousand dollar expenditure.
Did a lot of people use that?
You can spend a hundred thousand, and we're gonna give you five, or whatever. Oh, guys, I meant to turn that off.
We, we didn't, we didn't have Ms. Congrat singing for us, rather Bernie.
Oh no, I was George Strait.
Mrs. Wrangler would concur, yeah.
Would we, as a board, have to create a committee to handle the administration of this, is that how we would do it?
Well, we're getting ahead.
Oh, sorry.
We're trying to get in here, trying to decide philosophically as a DDA board, what do we like in terms of percentages? Max now five thousand dollars was the limit, would, would have been the limit twenty years ago when you guys did this, so maybe that number's different, I can tell you, having just gone through a couple of construction projects, five thousand dollars ain't much, but we have fifteen this year to start with, so.
We only have fifteen thousand?
Yeah, so that's like.
For this year, that's what.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So that's like one person.
One person could almost beat up the whole.
But, what, what would be good though, is if we do introduce this program, we can see how populous program could be, and then we can allocate resources for the next year's budget based on that.
Well, we, we obviously have only so much coming in too, but yes.
Right.
Could we amend that budget at all?
I mean, in a circular way, we're contributing to the increase of property values, which in turn funds us.
Yep, well, that's where I was going, if we only have fifteen thousand, you know, you're looking at one person helping if we're at fifty percent, so, if we lower that, we have the ability to help more.
Both Sparta and Howard City have been ongoing for multiple years, correct?
Well, then in the ease of keeping it simple, why don't we write it as three five thousand dollar grants? To test out the waters, see how it works, so it's like you're, as opposed to develop, to separating it to a thousand dollars for an awning, five thousand dollars for a blah, 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 blah. If we literally simplify ourselves, if we have fifteen grand available, there's three five thousand dollar grants, and that's what we have, and that's it, you show us your whole plan, and if we like you, you, one of the, the three that we like the most, win.
I would, I would pop over to Howard City's plan though and say that, hey, they're, they, they didn't have different sections necessarily, but they would do, they would do that percentage for any of it. If someone may have a three thousand dollar awning they want to put up, and we're, we'll give them fifteen hundred bucks, I mean, I wouldn't want to.
I don't disagree, I was just, yeah, in, in the interest of simplicity.
Yeah, and I.
That was on our goal sheet.
Yeah.
It's written right there in words.
It's easy. I don't know, I kind of like our, uh, table that we laid out the previous, where we have, you know, set maximums for each individual, because it does encourage other people who might not need a whole total facade makeover, but still, something's better than nothing.
Well, if we look at, again, the Howard City one, which Ms. Falcon kind of referred us to, um, eligible applicants, and this would be on page three of the Howard City plan, and if you look in the middle of that page, and it is, their fit, their program is fifty percent, and it has eligible facade features eligible to be improved with grant dollars include, but are not limited to, the following, and it includes repair, restoration, replacement of original exterior, cleaning, restoration, painting, replacement, including shutters, signs and awnings, repair or replacement existing, uh, or installation of new signs and awning, masonry, wood, brick, exterior repairs, repainting or low pressure cleaning, exterior lighting and windows and door, repainting, replacement, cornices, parapets, uh, roof repair, res- restoration or replacement, must be visible part of the building facade, or other improvements at the discretion of the DDA board. That's pretty all inclusive, and gets away from what we had in the Cedar one originally, where um, and it specifically excludes, uh, the drawings, I believe.
Yeah, I like that one.
There is a potential starting point if we like that.
I like it.
We're not, we're not, this is a discussion, right, we're not doing, Darla, we're not doing motions, and, yeah, okay. Are we meeting on Monday again already?
Monday, it's from now, it's a more, yeah, yeah, I can't think that far ahead anymore.
After my last two weeks, yeah.
I looked and I couldn't find it, and I apologize, I thought it would see map, is there a map of our downtown, has it changed?
In ours?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it's not, I don't think it's in the packet, just because we have, we've had it out there many times, but.
Well, I remember in, in the old days, when we did it before, Verrehead Ford, or say Kelly, it was not included. Okay, now does that mean they're, now not, it's.
Actually, Bernie, it's on page, oh, is that the Sparta, that's Sparta, never mind. Scanned, corrected, again, it's just like being home.
I guess, how many potential businesses do we have in this?
Um, we've, we've passed that map around before, we, when we reset the DDA, we went, we went through it, I mean, it's up and down Main Street, it does include all the way up to eighteen miles, so it includes you guys, and it goes to the west as well, so. Includes, I think, CS as well, doesn't it? Pretty sure it does. It's important, we obviously can dig it up, but this would just be in the packet, like, I'm sure that it, the map would be included, so. So do we like that, do we like that definition of eligible expenses?
I do.
I do.
Is there anything we want to, would want to add to that, or delete from that? Right?
Said it covers pretty much everything.
Well, and it gives us a little bit of leeway, because it has other improvements at the discretion of the DDA board.
Right.
Although, in the interest of simplicity, that may, we may be.
More work.
Maybe painting, yeah, we may be assigning ourselves some more, more work, so.
We also need, do need to consider what their, right below that, they had the ineligible improvements written in as well. We got, ineligible includes any improvement made, uh.
Ineligible includes any improvement made uh made prior to grant approval, interior improvements or decorations, removal of architecturally important features, new construction and additions, that's totally new, uh inventory and equipment, sweat equity or applicants, personal labor, plantings or landscaping, which would be part of uh garden clubs work, um general or routine maintenance and cleaning, residential properties unless it is a mixed-use building, properties that have taxes or special assessments in arrears, and properties that do not have property taxes included as part of TIF, which would just be outside of the DDA. Might also want to include on that the uh architectural engineering. If we don't like that idea of.
It was that um.
Twenty-five.
This would be, yep, I'm sorry, DDA's page four. Three and four.
Mine says five.
Twenty-three and twenty-four in the packet.
That's crazy. I've got a different number altogether.
What about buildings that are for sale?
Well, they would have to have a plan that's executed and I mean, they would theoretically be eligible, but the DDA would have discretion over whether they like that idea if you're just gonna sell it, but. Better to sell a nicer building. Any additions to the list or or to the ineligible list? We want to exclude the engineering and drawings.
We want to exclude that and then the big chains on that? That's one of our concerns is putting the chain or getting the chains out of there, so we need new verbiage on that.
If we want to exclude, then we would have to come up with a definition of what that is. Only we had a lawyer.
Chat GPT. Pass the bar exam.
We had a subway down here once, and it was pretty busy.
Yeah, it was really. That's really great.
We've had multiple. We've had Napa. I think one of the existing businesses downtown is a chain.
Oh, yeah, right.
Multi-state. But that that goes into that question. Do we want to exclude somebody like that? And I'm fine either way. I'm just saying that would be.
I wouldn't, but.
I was just about to say that right there is the key. That's like Chick-fil-A, and that covers everything.
But the some like subway is independently owned, not operated.
Or many franchises. So is the McDonald's here.
Yes. You're still getting. They're still getting reimbursed from them from a franchise, so.
Hungry Howie's in the, you know.
I think Hungry Howie's is based in Michigan, but I do think they have multiple state locations.
Well, I wouldn't support uh not allowing chains. Loom is a chain.
Does Howard City do?
I brought up the questions.
Cute, Dave.
Your brain smoke.
I think, you know, philosophically, we we want downtown to look nice, and when they come in, they absolutely make improvements that generally improve on the appearance of the property, but as others have mentioned, they're franchising and have resources that a local may not, and if we have fifteen thousand dollars and we give them five, that's five at less that goes to anybody else locally.
But we can amend the budget if we happen to go.
Well, the budget will be amended every year, and hopefully it grows.
Yeah.
But in this particular year, as an example, I'm not advocating either way. I'm just trying to go through the pros and the cons here that we can make a decision over where our philosophy lies, and then secondly, how we define it.
Pretty easy way to define a chain is really anything with, excuse me, anything with more than five locations, I would consider a chain. Two spots, you're expanding. Three spots, eh, you get to five or six, you're a chain. Doesn't matter what you are. They could all be in the Grand Rapids area, but you're still a chain.
Well, let's look at it this way. Uh what if uh a Uchellos came in? They're a local. They have.
They have a chain.
Is that a chain? I mean, that's what I'm asking.
What if you define it even more and just say any company that has ten or more that are also multi-state? And you're just completely locked.
Now, we're getting away from the easy. We're getting more complicated again.
We're getting away from.
Well, that's why I use Uchellos as an example, not not multi-state. But do we want to support Uchellos? They have resources. I used to work for Firell. Believe me, he's got resources.
Is you gonna? No, I think you do. You're gonna take advantage of a program. It's for Cedar Springs. It's gonna make its place nicer.
And at the end of the day, these are.
Entrepreneurs made a living far off of somebody else.
Well, I mean, Bernie, you're a good example. You're Ford. Are we gonna count that as a chain? Dealerships all over, even though yours is an independently owned dealership, same as a local McDonald's would be. They do have independent franchisees.
I don't even think I would. I'd say yes. We want to do it.
See how simple we've made it here?
Heck, you might for all. I know you're gonna become a chain pretty soon, too. There'll be a lot of.
Oh, no, I'm already.
Much as a franchise.
There's so much root beer I can sell here. Want to buy a brewery? Sure, fire away. We'll rely on the voice of experience here.
We would think.
I think that would absolutely fall under business friendly. I think the contrary is, however, I don't think any of us want to see downtown filled with chains. So that's the contrary, and it's not a small town.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, can't we do it on a case-by-case basis? So if a chain comes in and say it's a Uchellos chain, right? Like, we don't necessarily have to put that verbiage in there.
You do wanna, I'm not a lawyer, but uh I think you do want to codify this just a little bit because if we do it on a case-by-case basis, you are giving yourselves a great big target for for loss.
That's my concern with us saying we don't want to allow chains either to take advantage of this grant like that. My concern is that, that, but also.
At this point in time, are we gonna get chains? I don't see them coming. They're gonna go out there maybe. I don't know how far that map goes.
Got an Aldi coming right now.
I was about to say that they're.
What is that in the DDA?
It's not in the DDA, but.
I mean, look at where.
If there was a property in the DDA that they like, it might be in the DDA. Do we want to give them money? Public money.
I understand. No.
We just had three chains come in, cloud cannabis, you know, loom.
They called. How are they?
They're chains. So I mean, that's your definition of chains is right here, and they're already here. So it's just, do we want more of them? At the end of the day, it's tax money that we're getting from them. So do we want to exclude them or not? And part of the economic development is more chains or more companies that we have here, the bigger that we can grow, the bigger budget we can suffice. So do we really want to minimalize that just to local, or do we want to open it up so we can grow is the question? Exactly.
If we go back to our original goals, we want to beautify, modernize, we want to make it easy, encourage upkeep and encourage new business.
I was all for not bringing chains in, but now that I'm kind of thinking we're talking about this is if we are discluding, then what is that doing for us? We're minimizing who we can help, and we're basically saying that we're content with what our stores look like right now. We bring in chains. Each one of the chains that came in, they've all.
Excluding them from this will absolutely not prohibit chains.
Right.
As we've already seen.
Right.
It's it's saying we're not going to give DDA money to them.
Right.
For their project.
Like, the cloud canvas that just came in, they just totally re tore that building down, you know, basically built it from the ground up. They would have benefited from this, and even though they had the money, it's, you know, it's encouraging them to come down, right?
They would have, and they would have taken the money.
Right.
It's a good good way to say welcome to Cedar Springs Business District.
It is, yeah.
You know.
Well, and Howard City doesn't, you know, they allow it, right?
I I don't believe uh now Sparta does as well. However, both Sparta and Howard City do have prohibitions on multi-property use. So I wasn't, this was kind of a neck, the next step to get to, but it kind of is the same to the same question. Sparta has a rule for um the applicant should not receive funding uh who who should not receive an additional um grant for if they've received funds within the three years of a specific property or multiple properties. So they'd have they'd have to come every three years, and Sparta does every five years. So they have a similar or repeat project that have received funding through within the last five years are not eligible, and a single owner of multiple properties uh may apply for grant, but for each property, but not receive more more than ten for ten K, which was their limit within a five-year period. So they could have multiple properties, but they would be subject to the limit.
Repeat that again. I can't find it.
Well, this is kind of a secondary thing. I mean, I think we should find we should just settle on how we want to do the multiple, the uh the chain thing first.
Oh, the chain thing, okay.
But this is kind of a corollary to it because when you have people that have multiple properties, you know, this is a concern to them, obviously.
Are we considering this sort of like a pilot program at this point?
I was just about to ask.
Because if that's what we're doing, then let's leave it more open.
Yeah.
For our our first go, they're just kind of like.
Well, this the original Cedar has no. It is entirely possible that we have a landlord here that comes and does applicants and takes all the money and it's gone.
Right.
So there may not be nothing wrong with that, anything wrong with that, because they're going to improve their properties, but we may also say we want to spread a little sugar around, too. I don't think anybody's looking at punishing, but what they are looking at is that you're already here, and there's a good chance that you're on on the ball, and there is a possibility that the entire funding goes to one landlord, and that that's what the board has to decide. Is that fair to others that may not be sitting here right now? No, it's nothing personal, but.
Or even somebody looking to start their business in town if that is already all gone by one person, but yeah.
Again, if we're hope we're hopeful of making this an ongoing project, and certainly hope, you know, you want to have there be enough for everybody over time, but I think what we're trying to deal with here is the question of of fairness and what we want our downtown to look like when we we look at making it beautiful, modern, and easy.
So the question is, though, is at this point, if this is just our pilot program, if that's what we want it to, why don't we do a first come, first served this year? See, you know, what this attracts, and then we amend based off that for next year and get that in planning. So we don't disclude any chains. We don't disclude any multiple things. We just put it out, plan out there, say we have fifteen thousand dollars. We'll match up to fifty percent right now. Let's see what applicants we get, and based off that applicant, then we sit down in the next six months and say, hey, let's, this is what we got. This is what we can attest to and change it off base that for the next year.
Would that discourage anybody? It would it would might discourage, might discourage me if I were or you. If you got, whether it's already been three applicants or four or five or something. Is that gonna affect?
Timing is certainly part of it because when the money is gone, the money is gone, and if you get, we get eight applicants this year, you know, most of them are going to be left out. Either they have to delay their project or, you know, we as a, you know, these matches are up to a certain amount as well. You know, the board may say we have multiple applicants. We're going to give everybody a little bit. I mean, that ends up being work for us.
But it's fair.
I think that.
These are the questions we have to answer. Know what we're doing. That's all. That's all I'm doing here is playing the what-if game, you guys, so.
I mean, if they had the money to do it, they would have already done it, right? So the thing is, is if we put this out right now and say, hey, it's a first come, first served, at least we can see who's looking to upgrading, and then next year we can base our budget based off that. Right now, we have no idea how populous program's gonna be, so putting it out there right now just to seeing what bites is gonna be in our best interest, and then just doing up to that fifty percent allocation. Then when we change it next year.
And my 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 only observation on that is uh folks that do have resources can time it out to make sure that they get the max.
They could.
Available to them, too, so.
My two cents on that is if you say first come, first served, I think that's a, I think that's discouraged. My personal opinion is that's discouraged because if somebody's already done it, what am I gonna do? And it's gonna, or if I want to be first, I'm gonna jump in there and do something quick and not do as good a job as I should in planning. Because I'm getting my money. I want I want to be in there now, so you approve it. That's I'm honestly, that's gonna happen.
Or they wait and get a flood for next year when we have the next go-around.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, all these things are certainly possible to happen. Like I said, I started this conversation philosophically. What do we think about mul- multi-problems and what do we think about chains? Think if we answer those questions, and I think it's good that we're trying to beat this up from every angle.
I think we should say all of them are due on the state. We meet as a board and we.
That's what Howard City does, yes.
That's exactly what I would do. And I also think, and no offense to you, Sanya, I also think if she does one building, she should be only be allowed to do one building per year. I don't think one building owner or, you know, one person that owns a ton of buildings in town should be able to eat up all the funding.
Yeah, I do think it should.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yours are are almost like.
Yeah.
We can always change it later, too, so.
Well, we certainly can change, but I I'm.
Because there's tons of.
That's why I think it's good that we have three different ones to look at. Sparta does five year in between Cedar or Howard City does three years in between. You're suggesting one year in between. We could have no years in between, which is what the original Cedar one did, so.
That way.
We're dealing with limited funding.
She wanted to do a building a year, she could, right? Yeah, and it and it doesn't eliminate other people that only own one building, right? They're like, wait, I I got my application in two seconds after Sanya did, and she took up all three of them. Right? Or even Len Allington, who owns a bunch of buildings. I mean, I just think that 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 way it could be fair for everybody.
I think it's fair that way to help spread the money around to more than just one.
Well, I think the timing issue may be addressed by what you brought up and the Howard City program where they have a date. They say everybody that everybody needs to be in at a certain time, and then there's consideration done. You know, four of those may be it may be a way of doing it.
You may get one person that says, hey, I want a two thousand dollar awning, and you're only giving them a grand. Right? So this way we can see like, hey, we have eight applications, and how can we make this money go the furthest?
So is it my my understanding that the person actually does at least five thousand dollars worth of work on this improvement?
So sides and awnings.
They have to have the job complete. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
I mean, stipulation on.
Each one of these have a timing.
Okay, all right.
They don't start it. It has to be started for so long and finished within so long.
Yeah.
So if we're backing up here at this point, we're we're we're, I mean, I'm sensing agreement on fifty percent.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sensing agreement on the fifty percent match up to ten thousand, which would be a five thousand dollar grant.
It's a max of five.
They'd be getting a max of five for a project, and all eligible expenses would be under under that instead of compartmentalizing. So that part we've got done.
I agree.
Write that down.
The scenario is this, we get more money and and somebody comes in.
When, Bernie, when?
Next year.
Yeah.
When we get more money next? When we get more money next year. Uh, and somebody's got five thousand, all of a sudden, we have to up, we can up that to eight or nine or ten. What's that do to the guy that's paid five last year?
Well, he would be able to come, he or she would be able to come back. Whatever we say, if it's three or five or one year, they can come back again.
Fine, that's what I wanna hear.
Well, theoretically, if that's what we decide, we've got at least three things decided.
Yeah.
Fifty percent match up to ten, which would be five thousand dollars of funding. Fifty, fifty percent of ten. It's like a 401K match, so you get fifty percent.
Thousand or more, at least, at least.
I hear what you're saying. We're, we'll get the language, but you know.
Thousand DDA dollars.
Yeah, we max contribution from DDA is five. Oh, sorry, wrong choice of words there.
No, no, I liked that.
Contributing to our community, right?
Flat fifty percent or are we doing this where it says signs and awnings, twenty-five percent match up to a grand?
No, I think, I think that's what we're saying is all eligible expenses, similar to the Howard City program. And not doing this chart like we have it, so the eligible expenses are, that are listed there, yep.
Howard City actually has fifty, fifty percent match up to ten grand, signs and awnings, twenty-five percent match.
Oh, they, yeah, they do.
They do.
Sparta, Sparta is just a flat.
Part of.
Sparta was a flat one.
Yep, yep, yep. Howard had different, kinda similar to what our proposal was. No architectural drawings or anything.
I, the, the summary has, unless the summary is written incorrectly.
I think the summary.
All, all grants fifty percent reimbursement is under Howard City on the summary.
Right.
So I'd have to go back to the actual thing to see.
It is in the program too, it's fifty percent.
Page twenty-six.
Okay.
That was the summary of ours.
Right.
That was the summary.
Page twenty-six is the summaries.
Yeah.
That's, that was of ours though, not of, not of Howard City's. Howard City's is fifty percent of all eligible expenses, including.
Oh, got you. Okay, okay.
Yep, which would be at page twenty-five of the summary or in the actual packet itself. Alright, so we're, we're.
What have we agreed to?
No, we, we agreed, it's fifty percent.
Yep.
All eligible expenses, up to five thousand dollars of DDA money or up to ten thousand dollars of expenses. That part we've got good and, or that we.
Is that right up to, is that correct?
No, don't say up to ten thousand with expenses.
It's five.
No, that confuses people because somebody that spends fifty thousand is gonna think, am I gonna get ten?
Thousand or more.
Yeah, she, the worry she was going back.
Dollars of DDA funding.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we haven't really made a decision on chains or multiples yet.
So what's next?
Does anyone have additional thoughts on this? We can define it, but.
I'd say we just leave it open for our first year and see what applicants we get and then we can revise that next year.
Anybody opposed to that? Eligible, multiple properties.
Are you gonna allow multiple properties?
I'm asking that.
So too with the.
Or we're saying before, one property per year per applicant.
I'd support that.
I would feel that too.
And then we can, we can either define it as like Sparta had it where you can't do, you, you have to wait three years to come back again. Or we say, you can come back every single year.
I say every year.
And then if, if we've decided we don't like that anymore, we can change that. There's no, there's, as far as I know, there's nothing that says we can't alter it when we, when we consider this next year.
I think if somebody goes through the program one year and they've got a multiple property, they're like, hey, well, next year I'm gonna start doing this one and, and that's only gonna help make downtown pretty.
There's a lot of scenarios.
At the same time though, if they get all their properties, then your your city looks more modern, it looks more beautiful. And then, once they're done redoing all their facilities, then the next year.
Start over again.
Yeah, like, well, I mean, like more, the, the other companies I didn't get in are either gonna not do anything or they're gonna do it the following year. I think a one year, I mean, isn't a bad thing.
It's a bad thing either, what, what, just what if? You didn't, we didn't use, what if we only had one applicant this year? I'm sure we, well, but what if?
Well, then we, then the money would roll over to the next.
There you go.
Absolutely.
Like a waiver, like a ticket?
Them from doing construction right away though and improving the stuff right away.
Then by doing that, you're discouraging the following year's applicants. Right, but so they say, they say this year we get eight, we can only approve five. Then we say, okay, you three are first on the list for next year. Well, we get eight more applicants next year, now we can only award to two people. And now there's six people that didn't get it. So now we say, okay, now we're gonna get six, there's one of those still isn't gonna get it the third year, is, and that I, I don't see that working. I personally would suggest that each year would be a new consideration.
Absolutely, yes.
You have a new board that has talk, yeah.
Okay, so we've like we, every other year, so, or every year, I think we're, we're good with that. So we got that down. Do we want to?
Sorry, we're allowing chains?
I think we all agree.
One year.
The will, the will of the, of the DDA was that we would allow any, any applicant. So then I think the only other real thing in terms of, uh, functionality would be, do we want to have a time of year when we consider all these at once? Or do we wanna have trickle, trickling, um, uh, applications and consider them as they come until the funding runs out.
Timing year.
Time, everybody should do it at one time.
Pros and cons to both.
Understand. But then we can have a meeting like this one where the only thing we do, we do a special meeting, you know, where we, on, on a random day where the, if you are one of the applicants, you come here and you can present it to us as a live presentation and we have our paper copy. And then that's open door and then we do our closed order to decide who wins.
Totally agree.
And that, and that's.
But I'm gonna, let me play devil's advocate and then we have a wonderful husband and wife that wanna start a new bakery shop and they just missed the deadline. Are we gonna force them to wait for the year before they can submit?
Yes, they missed the deadline. As I, it sucks, rules suck, but rules are there for a reason. There's a reason I have this on my cup, man.
That's fine, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking.
So we'd have a cutoff. When would we wanna do that then? Most construction typically is in summertime, so like a, a May-June is the cutoff and that gives ample time for them to see.
I think that gives them enough time to something before the bad weather.
Of this particular year, cause our funding doesn't kick in till July first, right?
So this would be a special year, but moving forward.
So, what we may want to look at then is perhaps the following February or March in anticipation of summer season.
Yes.
That we would have consideration over the, over the winter, just thinking out loud. That gives us time to hopefully publicize the program and get applicants ready to go and give everybody a fair shot at it.
Yeah.
January one, applications available.
Yeah, and then like.
For example.
Yeah, and then like what, April first?
Yeah.
All submissions have to be done by April first and gives them three months to.
First, April first, whatever you wanna do, I don't, and I don't care, but I would think if we're doing it in, over the winter time and we know we can award those grants by the spring, that gives people time to get it done in the summertime and hopefully it's finished by the following year.
Any construction involved, that takes planning and timing too, that they need to know in advance.
Exactly.
In order to.
Like what we saw with broke construction.
In accordance to.
Cause everything takes longer and it costs more.
Yes.
Working on my house for nine months, got nothing done.
April, you think is good?
I know, I would say March. By March first.
Gives you two months from the first of the year, but we can, we obviously have this whole year to publicize it.
Yeah.
That's unreasonable.
Yeah.
March first.
Decision by April first?
Well, then we could, we would obviously have March.
We could award it.
Yeah.
Or name the companies that received the grant.
Well, thinking a little bit for ourselves with the practicality, let's say we get fifteen applications. We all know everybody's schedule, so they're all in on March first and we're gonna now determine them by April first. So that gives us as a board thirty days to try to get everybody together and review these, which, you know, may be simple and it may not be.
We could do a special meeting, our meetings are already on the twenty-fourth, so we have a meeting and we could call a special meeting if needed. But we'd have that.
One meeting already. It's one thing if we have two applicants, it's another if we have fifteen.
I get it, I get it.
They get their elevator pitch though. They, they're, the, when you're, when you're in, uh, when you're in, uh, uh, the city council meeting, you're limited. You get, what is it, four minutes?
Four minutes.
Yeah, and you don't, you can't talk longer than that. So they gotta get their whole pitch in, in four minutes.
It's no different than a sky.
If, if we're gonna do that, if we're not gonna do it, I got no, I got no problem with it either way.
Well, this is, this is, gets into, I mean, we're, we're trying to get our ground rules laid right now, but that, that's gonna be the second part of the practical matter in this, in that how we do wanna administer this. Is this something where the DDA director's gonna go through and review these? Are we gonna review all of them and have finalists that we want to come in and do an elevator pitch? Do we wanna have everybody line up and have the dog and pony? Do we wanna have none of them? I mean, these, that's, gets into a practical, a practical.
How did, how did you do it last time?
That's a good idea.
But, but tho- those three people had final say? There was no other input after that? Okay.
Just to be clear, that commission then gets the deciding factor on who gets the grant.
That was the way it was done.
So then it takes easy back into our consideration off the DDA.
You know how they're doing it in, in Sparta or in Howard City?
Howard City, it's a DDA board decision. The DDA director works with the applicant ahead of time. When he feels it's ready to go to the DDA board, it's presented to the DDA board, their decision, it's DDA funds.
No planning commission involved?
I know when you and I.
Commission information that needs to be handled ahead of time, that's done ahead of time between the director and the applicant.
So now you and I's preliminary conversation, that was one of the, uh, questions. Obviously, any project's gonna have to have planning approval regardless. But whether we wanted to have, whether we wanted to have any communication with planning in terms of their overall that any facade improvements that we're approving. I mean, technically, we're independent, we can approve what we, what we wish. But whether we want to have their input in terms of, um, matching, uh, aligning with overall master plans or city plans, any of their design requirements.
Signing is always a problem.
Signing is always an issue, obviously. Well, but there, there's a, it's a question for us in terms of how we wanna handle these DDA funds. I mean, while I certainly think that that's a nice idea of, of a, of a triumvirate, you know, our DDA, who is technically dollars it is, has one-third influence on a decision of that, we're giving that up.
Or what?
Do we want to do that?
I would.
Well, do you wanna have input if you're not in it?
Here, I trust you.
I'm asking.
I trust everybody.
Well, it's not, it's not us, it'd be one person.
I trust the planning commission.
Well.
It's not planning, trust the planning.
Talking DDA, you'd have one member.
These are DDA funds that we'd be spending.
Right.
So do, does the board want a final decision, a final approval on that if we follow the old track and way of doing it? Or do we wanna have any input at all from those other bodies?
I think there could, could be some discussion. I think you could have a second, a second meeting with quorum or something and, and approval or not approve. I know you, I know you're not being devil's advocate, you're just doing it.
Other thoughts?
Let's say that we, if the DDA chose and then the planning commission basically said no to theirs, would that would essentially push it back for an open applicant to bring in? Cause I guess where I, where, where I'm seeing from what your standpoint is, is there's a lot of talks with different commissions to getting this.
She, she was describing the way it was done in the past.
Right, but it's still the same process is when they go to want to update the facility, they gotta go to the planning commission saying, hey, we're doing this, then we gotta go to permitting, gotta go through that, correct? That's how that works, just to make sure.
Well, sign permits.
But nonetheless, I mean, if, if it's five thousand, I mean.
Somebody was doing an exterior remodel and they're putting a new awning and a new sign on their bil- on their building as an example, they'd have to get planning commission approval, correct?
Right.
No?
No.
Here we go. That answers that question.
Zoning permit, I, I mean, it depends on the extent, if you're replacing a wall, yes. If you're just putting a sign on the outside, that doesn't need planning commission approval.
About like new.
zoning administrator approval, not planning commission approval.
You better put four people on her.
Windows.
No, there's nothing for that.
No planning.
There's no special hoops there then, so yeah, then I'd just say DDA.
Is when something significantly changes on the outside of the building.
Alright, so then that gets, that, that begs that question, do we want to have a separate committee formed or is it something we wanna throw by those boards if we're going to approve? Or do we want to not include them at all?
Is, is the process very streamlined in Howard City?
Yes.
How about we just stick with what's streamlined in Howard City because I recreate the wheel?
So just to make sure, Howard City meets with the DDA, DDA has final approval.
Correct.
So.
The board.
So the twenty-fourth, we still meet and then we decide on the applicants and proceed from there.
March twenty-fourth, is that the?
No, I'm just saying that our meetings are on the twenty-fourth, so we have one every month, so make it easy.
This would be next year, but yeah.
Right.
So in their case, the, the executive director performs a preliminary review to ins- ensure that all program guidelines have been met. And then the ED submits the applications to the DDA for review. The incomplete applications will not be reviewed. The applicant or their representative shall appear before the DDA and provide additional or clarifying information. They'll study the proposal and make a recommendation. The DDA may send the proposal back to the applicant with a request for modification or simply notify them of their acceptance or rejection of the proposal. If chosen, they shall sign a conditional grant agreement. Upon completion of construction, the applicant must contact the ED to arrange to have the completed work inspected for compliance with the, uh, proposal. DDA board members that hold a financial interest in the facade grant request will not participate. Makes sense. And the, uh, DDA will disperse, uh, applicants for eligible improvement once the conditions of the grant agreement haven't met. So essentially applicants would come to you, you'd screen them and then we would consider them and, and give notification. Is what, is how they do it.
Yeah. It's pretty straightforward, goes back with easy.
That goes back to having a board, I think that's as a board review.
And then it's fair, with all due respect, cause then you're doing a voting process through it, so.
Is that how we wanna do it?
I think so.
Yeah.
I'm good with that. Yeah, I think the money, if the money's coming from this board, we should be the ones deciding that.
You're right, doing the reviews and.
I have questions, we have an excellent planner. I mean, I have resources, you know.
Right.
I mean.
Like I said, I, I, the one concern which I shared with you in preparing for this was that I wouldn't want us to approve something that's really contrary to uh, either, um, master plan or something that they're.
Do we wanna invite a member?
Well, I think that would be the preliminary review, is if there was questions that the DDA director would then, would then reach out to those Well, I think that would be the preliminary review, is if there was questions that the DDA director would then, would then reach out to those boards and say, you know, is there a concern here? And we have the right then to ask for clarifying information. My, I guess my, personally, my concern is thirty days is not gonna be a lot of time.
Right.
So, that makes it
Oh, maybe we should say
February first?
February first, I mean, it's a month for them to get everything into us, it's not like Actually, the application can be available on our website.
Sure.
Just needs to be submitted, and that's the only thing, yeah. Then the review process is that
Submit during the month of January, correct? That could be prepared and ready to go.
Once we advertise, you know, submit it early if you want, if you want preliminary, you know, review by the zoning administrator or any of that. So are we holding this, this year's funds to next year?
We don't have this year's funds until July.
Oh, okay.
So this would be next year.
Yep, got you.
Would open January first, it would close February first, we have, people have thirty days to submit, they can submit anytime, but that's when we'll start, that's when she starts her. So, then, then we would have from February first to April first, two months, basically to do our side, so we may have up to two meetings to go through this, or call a special meeting if necessary. Thinking through the practical side of this.
If somebody's filled out a application or permit or whatever we're gonna do, um, they got till February first. But if something happens, they can't get an estimate or whatever contractor, can we extend that for that person if they come in and say, hey, I, I just can't get the information I need in this amount of time?
Well, we certainly could, but we're gonna review the el- the eligible, I mean, if, if they miss the deadline, they may have to wait till the following year.
Oh, okay.
Be the, I think is what I'm hearing.
I mean, we have plenty of notice this year, right?
Right.
In July, we can start advertising.
That's the beauty of setting up a calendar, that this is when it is every year, so you would know.
Already available for them to fill out at any time, so that
Yeah, from January first, they can submit it.
Absolutely, that gives them plenty, plenty of time to
They'll have plenty of time.
Just a quick question, so our, our budget comes available on Ju- July first, this would essentially roll over until January and February of next year, and then be approved.
Our fiscal year runs July first to June thirty.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
So that's still in the twenty, twenty-three
So we don't need any special language for the next year?
Already budgeted, we approved our budget last meeting.
Yep, yep, no, I knew that, it's just language of building this out for this year, but if we're doing it for January and February of next year, then we're fine.
Word it that way, you know, applications become available July first or the following year.
Yeah.
Do January first, so that gives them six months to fill out the application, do the planning requirements that they need on their end for the following year.
That's exactly where I was going with that.
Yeah.
It's a lot of busy work, isn't it? Go here, go
Well, it is, but we're giving people
It all takes planning.
Money, yeah.
Yeah, six months, maybe.
Plenty of time to
We got this nailed down? Sounds like we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think we've got some of the basics, obviously, it's gonna be putting the language together, and then putting the, um, putting the applications, uh, together. And some of these have certainly qualifications on the types of signs, et cetera, if we wanna get into that. Uh, I thought we were operating more under the, kind of like, cause this is, we're calling it a pilot program, kinda leading things more open with fewer definitions. I mean, if we wanted to find more stuff. We're, we're, if we're redefining the program, it is, the program obviously would have to be renewed every year, but
Right.
I mean, again, the previous Cedar Springs one had a lot more of this stuff specifically defined, the Sparta one has a lot of it specifically defined. Howard City one is much more open, as previously noted.
Yeah. I seen somebody using siding on the roof downtown a couple years ago. Remember that?
Really? Between, yeah.
Oh, it was
The line of work and
It was super exciting to watch, we actually sat outside and grabbed a soda.
We watched, we watched some interesting techniques across the street from us too there for a while.
That's what I'm talking about, the one that she put siding on the roof. It was the most wild thing I've ever seen in my life.
Well, I guess that is a, that is a question, I mean, I think we have some of the basics here nailed down, but do we want to there are some key design principles that were in the previous plan, and they are noted in the Sparta one as well. Things like commercial materials, no painting of brick, other than cement block, no tinted windows, film coatings. Is that a concern to anybody?
I don't, well, look, look what, um, what they did across the street from us, right? What Todd did, he painted that building, it needed painting, it looked terrible, right? See, I don't think we should say that, because there's some buildings in town that it's not
Put a paint would do well.
Mm-hmm, I'm, I'm Well, I thought that the, uh, no painting of the bricks, unless it had been previously painted. Correct. Okay, so, if you're looking at, on, on, on the previous Cedar Springs, when it was painting of brick, it's only allowed if the brick was previously painted, excluding cement block. Cement block could be painted. They also have no tinted windows, um, high-quality traditional materials is encouraged, other than demanded. I mean, because, you know, we may end up with, we may end up with some proposals in front of us that we all kinda go, eh.
We don't approve them.
Then you have to go in and define those things, like tinted windows, like, my front windows have a slight
Under, too, they need
It helps block the sunlight.
Yeah.
You know, being directly in people's faces, which is good for my business, like, you'd have to start defining that, going through that, like
So should we go line by line off our draft one, and see what we need and what we don't?
I'm just going off the old Cedar Springs one, but, I mean, the Sparta one also has some of these elements in there. The Howard City one is much more open, it basically is that, you know, I read the earlier the earlier eligible expenses, and the ineligible, and they don't really put anything other, in there, other than the board approves it. So, we kinda leave it very, very open. Asking whether there's any of these things that are concerns, I know the previous city manager had some concerns over signs, what types of signs and styles of signs. Is that something that we wanna get into?
Oh.
Oh.
I was gonna say, for pilot, let's just run course this year and see how that goes, and redefine if we need to for the following year.
Under the previous Cedar Springs one prohibited mirror glass, sealing or covering original window bays, removal of decorative, uh, harness ornamentation, security bars or window bars, roll-down gates.
We have those?
Uh, yeah.
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 We got an elevator.
No flashing or moving signs, no temporary signs, including banners. I'm ju- well, I'm, I'm just
Take it out, take it out.
I don't think we're including any of this, but I'm asking if any of these things we do want to specifically state, I would not be
I think things have changed.
We can judge it all on a case by case, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sounds like we're a lot closer to the Howard City one than, uh, than the others, Ms. Falcon. We can use that language as a template. With any amendments that we've already noted. Right, is there, I guess, I mean, that, if, if we're gonna use that as a template, I mean, we're gonna have a, we can do a draft and, and review it. Anything else major that we're missing? This is good Germany efficiency with a three-hour meeting.
I was gonna say, we nailed the goal of being easy today.
Any other major questions that I'm not seeing? Didn't have anything else in mind, note the things that I all noted here, I think we've addressed.
Um, just looking at our concerns, is it building owner and tenant, who, we're open for both of them, then?
We were, yeah, a tenant would have, again, I think there was There's language in here. Language, I don't know, I don't know if it's in the Howard City one, but a tenant can apply, they just need landlord approval. Exactly, in the Cedar Springs It's in the Cedar Springs, but I don't think it's in the Howard City. I misheard you. We're using the Howard City template.
Understood, understood, I heard you, I was just, I was listening wrong.
So that may be something that we wanna note.
That happens. That happens.
Ms. Cronk, I thank you for your input, did you have anything else you wanted to add? I don't, there's not one in this yet, but, and we have not discussed whether we have a fee. How many, we don't have too many, uh, there's not too many that we do have fees for, is there, in the city? Sidewalk signs, the only one I remember, is there anything, any, are there any applications that we have fees for?
There's no permit for the, and this?
Well, I don't think there is one noted here, but there are, in the city, the only ones that I recall is a sidewalk. The sidewalk sign
Cannabis too.
I made that one up.
Cannabis too, application.
Try to do the right
Cannabis application has a fee?
Yeah.
Fee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was a, there, there's a fee for the sidewalk sign application, but do we wanna consider a fee for this?
I, I, my only concern is you'd be discouraging people from submitting an application at that point.
Don't think we should charge them.
There is no charge for the sandwich boards, but you do have
You have to get a permit.
But you, there was, there is a, there is a fee to submit that application. It wasn't much, it's like ten bucks or fifty bucks or something, it wasn't much.
Don't think so. No, it's free, I was gonna say, cause we just did ours.
Getting a new sign, there's a twenty-five-dollar sign permit fee, sandwich board.
Sandwich board, you have to put a per, or request a permit, but it's free, yeah, and that's good for, for a year, so.
Maybe they waived it then, I know, I think
Yeah, it did, it did before.
It did, yeah. So, no application fee for this, then we're
I don't think so.
You're asking, you're wanting to provide money to them, let's not take their money.
It may be, well, having a fifty-dollar fee may save you a couple headaches and incomplete forms. Only reason I suggested that it may be worth doing. And decide that later, I guess. Alright, well, if anything, if, if we don't have anything else on, uh, this outline, we'll prepare, um, prepare a sample language for, uh, approval. Have no new business, I don't believe there's any other correspondence. Alright, you have a report?
I do not.
Brilliant. Have any trustee comments? All I would say is, thank you all for making some time today, uh, and getting this done, I think it is important, and, I mean, we, we established this in our uh, strategic planning, that this was important to us. Alright, if there's no other, any other comments? Or was that to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. If you wanna flag, sign up, and I will
Sign me up.
Bring it to
I already signed you up.